All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Here.
We're all here. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to item four, which is public participation. Any member of the public that's here that wishes to address the board, this is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. So item B, which is recognition of Eric Bogalski, am I saying your name correctly? For saving a life. So if you want to come down and join me, I'll introduce you to the crowd here. Big crowd. All right, so I'll just, should've got the wireless one for this, but just want to read a little bit about Eric, tell you a little bit about his story from what I've heard, and really just recognize his efforts. Last fall, he was out to dinner. He's a Montgomery resident and a senior at Yorkville High School. He saved a choking man's life by successfully performing the Heimlich maneuver. Eric is an Eagle Scout in Indian Valley Vocational Center, fire science student, and a future firefighter. Eric has learned about lifesaving skills such as CPR and the Heimlich maneuver in the Boy Scouts Bristol Bay Troop 34. He obtained the Eagle Scout status in November of 2013 at the age of 15, and is now beginning to enhance those skills in his training at the Sandwich Fire Department through Ivy V.C.'s Fire Science Program. This man is alive today due to Eric's quick thinking and willingness to take action, and we want to recognize him for saving a life.
Thank you very much.
Attendance is mandatory. I was gonna say, are you saying too many? Can we pick out a couple and make them go?
Otherwise, saving the life becomes a punishment if you have to stay for the whole meeting. Keep your report.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, move on to consent. Very short, four items. I'll read them and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of January 25th, accounts payable through February 4th, requests from Family Outreach Program to conduct tag days February 19th and 20th, and request from the Montgomery VFW to conduct a poppy drive May 13th and 14th of 2016.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yeah.
Trustee Heinz?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, item six, we have items for separate action. Item A and B are connected, so we'll entertain those separately, but we'll talk about them together. Item A, we have a recommendation of Plan Commission of PC 2016-003-SU, special use for outdoor storage at 1400 Boar Avenue, H Linden &amp; Sons Development, Steve Linden. And then we have the ordinance 1713 granting a special use for outdoor storage. This is the first reading, and we won't take action on that tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Director Young for a summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you the recommendation by the Plan Commission for the H Linden &amp; Sons Development Outside Storage Special Use. This is at 1400 Boar Avenue. Several years ago, this came before you for outdoor storage, and this is an expansion of that operation. It's on a paved surface. There's some additional landscaping that was recommended by both staff and the Plan Commission to be added along Route 30, and the Plan Commission recommendation was to prove, as was the staff's recommendation.
Did anybody come to speak about for or against this at the Plan Commission meeting?
The petitioner's attorney, who's in the audience tonight, made a presentation, but there were no residents or businesses that were opposed to this special use.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this item?
I got one. I don't think it was, maybe it was Steve, that came in on the first property, and at that time, we didn't know he was going to take the one in Kane County and turn that into the same basic thing, outdoor storage. But at that time, when he did the storage units, he said he would not have junk cars, he would not have big trailers and campers and all that. And as soon as he opened up that other one, there was a wrecked car right in front as you drove by Alderney or bypassed 30, and people got on me and said, "Well, what'd you let him do that for?" I said, "That's Kane County." Everything we asked of him, he did. His storage units are on blacktop, everything's fine. That's a different part, and we don't have any say in it. I would not want him to take this open spot now and put junk cars and things like he did on the other one. And I don't see this in any type of writing.
I'll let Attorney Kramer speak to that, but I don't think the intent is for any type of abandoned vehicles or vehicles that are in need of repair. They talked about some recreational vehicles, but not junk cars per se.
For the record, my name is Dan Kramer. I am the petitioner's attorney. To answer your first question, Denny, it was actually Harry, his dad, who was in. And although Harry is very much alive and in his late 80s, he has sold this property to his three sons, Steve and his two brothers, and the underground business, H Linden &amp; Sons, that installs underground sewer and water pipe, probably done tons of work in the village over the last five or six decades. And Rich is exactly right, no plan to store any kind of junk vehicles or anything of that nature. They are going to stripe the blacktop. It was suggested the Plan Commission, I frankly didn't know the answer, that we put a limitation on height to what the average recreational vehicle is, and allegedly they're 14-6 because of road height limitations. And I believe the motion at the Plan Commission was to recommend positive approval with the 15-foot limit, which is fine with us. The other fact, and the chairman of the Plan Commission asked that night, Steve and his brothers, again, it's a big chunk, buying the whole business from dad and the property, but their ultimate plan is to bring that Kane County property into the village. They just have to accumulate the capital where they can afford to blacktop that other lot, and they plan to bring it in.
Because their storage units filled up right away.
Storage units have been great business for dad and for them. It's nicely kept. The land plan, or the landscape plan, all was put in despite the fact that it's a bit off 30 when they widen it. It gets tremendous salt spray from 30, so they're going to have to find some more or less salt-sensitive plants, but we're going to work with staff as far as landscaping.
Because Lindens, you're right, they do a lot of business in Aurora, especially last year, and they did business with us. But I know all three brothers, but I also know that if a buddy says, "Hey, I got my car in a wreck last night," guess where it up there, and that might have been how that one car got there.
Could very well have been.
But I just don't want to see it on our side.
Fair enough, fair enough. And if you want to put that restriction to the proposed ordinance, we certainly, no objection, Pete. It's good to see some old familiar faces again.
I just wanted to thank Attorney Kramer. I had asked for some clarification. He did get that information to me. Appreciate that. That was regarding the striping and how many spaces they would have. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Attorney Kramer while he's here? All right.
See you in two weeks.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for?
Yes, for item A, the recommendation.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
I carry 6-0. The ordinance 1713 is first reading. We'll vote on it at a future meeting, the next available meeting. Is anybody object to putting this on consent?
We're going to add the caveat about the...
Are they adding to the ordinance for the...
Yes.
I've got no problem. As long as it's added, I have no problem. Mm-mm.
All right. All right, move on to item C, and just C. Recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2016-002, amendment to the special use for outdoor storage and special use for alternative surfaces located at 1065 and 1079 Sard Avenue. This is JPC Tree Care LLC. This is to be postponed until the February 22nd Village Board Meeting, so we won't discuss it at all this evening.
That's correct. Request the petitioner.
Could I actually make a suggestion?
One other thing I'd like to add is that we didn't, there were several residents in attendance last Thursday night at the Plan Commission meeting. We made an attempt to contact all of them to tell them that the item would be continued till your next board meeting. So that word got out. We did receive a letter from one of them that I'll post in your packet next time, because they will not be able to be in attendance at the next meeting. So the word did get out to the neighbors, because they did testify at the Plan Commission public hearing.
Okay.
I wanted, sorry.
It seems like they've worked against us. Every time we told them to do something, they haven't done it. Am I correct?
Well, they exceed the limits of what their original special use was granted for in 2013. They realize that they've done some things, but they have not been able to comply with the requirements of the special use at that time.
I don't think we need them there, so...
Well, we'll save the whole discussion for...
Yeah, I would just say, Mr. Kramer, you need a good discussion in the two weeks, because you'll have some. So, that's all I'll say.
Okay.
All right.
I wanted to make a suggestion.
Yeah.
I was the only one there that evening, and usually there's three or four of us there, listening to the Plan Commission. There were quite a few residents in attendance, and quite a few who did speak out during the public hearing. I would suggest potentially getting the recording and listening to that to my fellow board members. I think it will be very enlightening for you.
It'll be on our YouTube channel, so you can watch it on...
Oh, they're being videoed now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought they were just getting recorded. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we have a YouTube channel, so you can go there and you can watch the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You can actually watch these meetings, too.
Yes, I'm aware of, I'm aware of that part.
Looking for something to do.
Okay.
We're on tape. Hi, Mom.
Wait, what?
All right, so we won't take action on item C this evening. All right, move on to item D, ordinance 1712, declaring surplus property. This is a waiver of first and passage on the second reading. I'm looking for somebody's eyes over there, and I'll turn over to Director Public Works.
President. Thank you. Public Works has worked with finance and police staff to identify some pieces of equipment that are no longer needed by the village. We recommend that they be declared surplus so that the village staff can resell or recycle them as appropriate. The attached ordinance allows for sale and disposal of those items. A brief listing is attached, but a 2001 GMC cabin chassis with 153,000 miles, a 1996 Chevy Caprice with 66,000 miles, but it's inoperable. The date is unknown, but it is six-by-eight enclosed trailer with a bent axle and a broken back door, power tilt swale bucket that currently doesn't operate with any of our machinery, two small electric generators no longer being used, and eight large hydrant meters that were historically loaned out to contractors for use. There is also 98 pieces of phone equipment. Since the village has changed its phone system, those probably bring the most value of anything on this list, and we will seek ways to resell that equipment.
Thank you. There's no comments or discussion? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. All right, move on for item for discussion. Discussion of the audit proposal results, and...
Item E.
Oh, we're going to do that one. Sorry about that. Whoever I shorted on that. Resolution 16-001, authorizing the execution of a recreational lease agreement with Commonwealth Edison. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. The attached lease agreement is something that has been negotiated with ComEd for the construction of the bicycle and pedestrian path. Generally, the lease is a fairly standard agreement. However, we were able to negotiate a couple additional provisions I wanted to bring your attention to. Specifically, we added a notice provision in case that the landlord needs to use the path, so the village would have proper notice in that case. We added a provision addressing any third-party damage that might occur. We added that in the case of an early termination on behalf of ComEd, the village would not be responsible to restore the path. And we added some clarifications regarding the confidentiality obligations the village has to fulfill with regards to FOIA and OMA. So we made that more friendly to the municipal arena from what they had originally proposed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have a diagram of the property involved?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that some of it was in the exhibits, but there was quite a few of them.
It's not in the electronic version, then?
There's multiple.
Oh, let me put it a different way. Is this in Kendall County only, or is Kane and Kendall?
Kendall County only.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
And do we have any funds budgeted to install this path in the future?
We have some, there were 93,000, $93,000 that were part of, I believe, a developer contribution several years ago. So I don't think that takes into account the entire cost, but majority of the costs.
Okay.
At least we can get started on the project.
Yeah.
Laura, do we have an agreement with them now? Is this a new agreement? Okay.
I would move to approve.
Second. Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Thank you. Carry 6-0. All right, now we'll move on for the item for discussion, which is the discussion of the audit proposal results. With that, I'll turn over to Director Finance.
Thank you, President Broali. The village released a request for proposals for auditing services due to the expiring contract with Sitikich. We went to the Illinois GFOWA website and looked at all of the vendors that provide these services. There are 10 listed on that website, and then we had received an email from an additional firm that asked to be included on the list. So there were 11 RFPs sent out to these particular firms. What we received back was five firms submitted those proposals by the deadline. One firm, the proposal arrived after the deadline. It was the same day, but it was later in the day than, it was supposed to be there by noon, and it got there at 4:00. Three firms submitted letters stating they would not bid at all, and then two firms did not respond. Of the five firms that submitted proposals by the deadline, one of the firms does not provide services to any Illinois municipalities, so we feel that they would not be able to provide us an adequate service level due to that. The four remaining firms, and you can see in your packet, the four remaining firms, we feel are qualified to provide the audit services to the village, and in your packet, the firms themselves and the applicable fees for each firm are shown. Those range from $120,000 for five, this is for a five-year term, $120,000 to $168,000. Staff would recommend accepting the proposal from the lowest bidder, but if the board has any questions, I could certainly answer those at this time.
I have a question, if I may. On, for example, the low bidder, I see that they have nothing in for comptroller or CAFR. If, for instance, a comptroller is needed, is that an additional cost?
No, it is not. On the proposal itself, and I have copies of all the proposals here that we received on time, there is a star next to those two items, and it says it is included in the cost of the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Now, and the ones that they do list it, if we don't have a comptroller, does that come off of the...
That's a report that is, that they prepare for us, that goes to the state comptroller. It's a comptroller's report. They prepare on our behalf.
Additory?
Yes.
Okay.
Of these, the one that we might not have every year is single audit, because that's based on us getting a certain amount of federal funds, like federal grants. So that one, we might not have every year, but the others, the others we would have audit through to report. So, and just as I've spoken, we feel any of these four would do, would be qualified and do a good job of this, so we would be happy with any of them. That's why we're...
All I'd say is Sitikich has done a good job for us, I think, all these years, and I think he does a lot of other municipalities, so we know he's good at that, but I was kind of amazed that he was, out of the four, he was by far the highest. Justin, can you kind of tell us who these, now Baker Tilly used to be out of England, I think, and Veachow or whatever, Virchow. They also were a different firm, the two combined, if I'm not mistaken, in the industry. But can you explain where these guys are at and how long they have been in business or whatever?
Lauterbach and Amen have been, are in Warrenville. They've been in business approximately 20 years, almost 20 years.
Where are they located?
In Warrenville.
Okay.
Off of Warrenville Road. Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, this particular firm, or the people at this particular firm were part of William F. Gurian Company, and then William F. Gurian Company combined with Virchow Kraus. Virchow Kraus is headquartered in Wisconsin. And then Baker Tilly is actually an international firm. It's a combination of all kinds of firms across the world. However, Virchow Kraus is the United States representative of Baker Tilly, so that's Gabbridge &amp; Company, I do not know a whole lot about Gabbridge &amp; Company. That is the firm...
I think we can just stick to the four, probably.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sitikich has been in business for many years as well. They are in Naperville. And then BKD was previously Wolfen Company, and then they combined in with BKD. They are headquartered in Oak Brook, and have been through a number of combinations, but have been in business for quite a while as well.
Wasn't there one at 153 somewhere? Or is that the one that came later?
Yeah, that's the one that...
Gabbridge or...
Gabbridge is the one that only has business in Michigan.
Oh, okay.
They don't have any Illinois presence at this point. We would be there first.
Answer my question, that's fine.
And one question that I'd ask today was what we currently pay for our audit every year? And it's, what's the amount that we paid last year? Do you know offhand?
The amount we paid last year was roughly $30,000. I think it was $29,780, but roughly $30,000.
No, this, this...
Okay.
That's my opinion.
What's that, Pete?
I see the Sitikich is only $18,000 higher than the second-place person down here. We've had no trouble with Sitikich. They've been with us for years. My own opinion, I say we stick with it. That's my feelings on this.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the board?
I would offer an alternate point of view. I think it might be a good idea to have a different set of eyes looking at our books. We've had Sitikich for a decade or more, and I'd at least applaud the idea of getting solicitations and bids. But I, given the fact that there's a chance to save some money here and get a different set of eyes looking at our books, I'm kind of unfavorable to that.
Does staff have any, any experience with Lauterbach and Amen?
Yes. I have worked with them before.
Pension board also.
What's that?
The pension board also has.
Okay, thank you.
My only concern with, or my only question is on their proposal, are we protected against, I mean, could they just, is everything that we need included in their proposal where we're not going to be nickel-and-dimed, where it gets up to the $150,000 range?
Everything that we need is included in the proposal.
Okay.
Where'd you say Baker Tilly was? I know Wisconsin, they're right in Madison, but around here where they're at?
This particular office is in Oak Brook.
Oak Brook, okay. I find it strange that they didn't put a dollar or some comment after CAFR and comptroller. You look at the figures, it looks nice, but then you take away, you take away the 3,000 and the 500, on Baker Tilly, it's 3,500 difference, the price is different. Now, are they, but you saying they're including that for a dollar or zero? Is that what you're saying?
It's included in the audit number.
Right.
And they just, instead of breaking them out separately, they put all three of those in the one line.
All right.
And did we give them this grid to fill out?
Yes.
And so they chose to add their number into audit as opposed to putting, breaking it out separate?
Correct.
Okay.
They just footnoted it and said it was all included.
Okay. Doug?
I just, I'm hesitant on the low bid, because we recently got burned by the street sweeper pre-year period time, but we went with the lowest bidder, which was too good to be true, and it turned out to be. We ended up letting him go after the first day. So that's my only concern, is, you know, we went with the guy that was really, really low. He was considerably lower than everybody else, and he couldn't provide the services we needed, and we ended up having to let him go. And it's my only concern, when somebody's this much lower than the average, that concerns me.
If I may, I did work with Lauterbach and Amen previously at my previous employer, and the fee there was less than this, but in terms of quality of work, it's just as high as any of the other ones listed.
Dan, you said you use them, and that's why I'm more worried, you know, it's... Dan, you said you use them, and that's why I'm more worried, you know, it's nice that you used them and sure, over another village, but what about Montgomery, how they did for us here?
They currently did a, they're our fiduciary that reports on our pension board on how our pension did, an audit. And I've talked to them several times over the years, because they'll handle some officers who have left here their pension payouts, and it's a good firm. Comes highly recommended.
So, you've used them more than one year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sold. I mean, that answers my concern, you know?
And I do, sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I agree with what Stan is saying. I think it might be a good idea to have a different set of eyes on that. I think that's a very good point, so I'd be in favor of using someone different this time.
You know what, and I agree with that. I think if Sikich was the number two, then we could have a longer discussion on switching, but they're the third highest, and they're the ones that should know this better than anybody else, and...
And they're 12% higher than the number two.
Yeah. And when we know it's not going to increase, and they're going to produce the CAFR and all of the reports that we need, and they've worked with Justin before, they know that, how prepared, you know, how prepared he's going to be when they come in for the audit, and so, I think, I think we move forward with the Lauterbach.
Do you need a motion?
We'll bring it back to you at the next meeting. We'll bring back the contract. We just wanted to get feedback to see which of the four you wanted to go with.
Consensus that we move forward in that direction?
With Lauter...
Lauterbach.
Yes.
Okay. Move on. Any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
Question, I guess. Go ahead.
You want me to say what I told you before?
You can say anything you want.
I was just going to point out, I had attended the State of the Village for Oswego, and there were quite a few state representatives there, as well as the county board representatives, and of course, I put our plug in for Orchard and 30.
Thank you.
And thanked them, and thanked them for the help, too. You know, I got the Orchard and 30.
Thank you.
I did attend the opening for the, and I should have written it down.
Waterford.
Waterford Resource Center, it's a new cancer resource center over adjacent to Rush Copley Hospital, and it is, it's just that it's a resource center for people, cancer patients, people that are affected by cancer, and there's no cost to anyone that goes there. They have yoga, art classes, different things, massages for patients, wigs. They have a complete resource center there, and it's a very inviting, it's almost like walking into someone's home. It's not very clinical at all, and it's all done through philanthropy. So, it was a really fantastic event that they hosted to kick it off. So, if anybody knows anybody in need of that, it's a great community resource in the area.
Thank you. Denny?
Question. Since we had your discussion on audit, I brought this up two, three times on the utility audit. Usually those things only take three months, and I haven't heard anything about it, but I haven't seen anything paid out on it. But I like some kind of, where are we at on it? I guess that's my comment.
So far, they have looked at Nycor, and we are paying a minimum amount. They did not find a lot with Nycor. ComEd, basically, they have been going back and forth with ComEd. They did find 260 addresses, and they're trying to work with ComEd. It is delayed, if you will. The sales tax, they did find 23 addresses that, for sales tax, that were not included. Two of those are no longer in business, so there was 21 that were communicated with the state. And that's where the, I guess you want to say the largest dollar amount, if you will, that has been paid out is in regards to sales tax. So, those are the three, the three items that they've completed at this time. They have tried to work with Comcast and have been running into some problems, and so they are working with other people at Comcast now to try to get that same information. Trying to think one other. And I think that's it. So, those are the main categories, if you will.
So, so far, it's not been a lot of money there. I remember when both these people came to us and said, boy, you guys could be missing 300,000, 500,000, a million, and now you're coming back saying, this is a fizzle.
Wasn't that much, but it was, sales tax was a good, I mean, a decent amount.
Sales tax, what they found so far was approximately $40,000. So, it's, I mean, it's not a small amount, but our agreement with them, we receive 55% of that money, and then they receive the 45%, but that will move forward for three years from the date that they found it, and then it will be done, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, future meetings. We have the committee of the whole meeting next week, beautification meeting, intergovernmental, and the village board meeting on February 22nd. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes, to discuss the employment of an employee and to discuss the acquisition of real property.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
All right, thank you.
You got your thing handy to open that door? Good, because I do not.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
I heard him. We're adjourned, thanks.